Roll call please, Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eady Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here. Consideration and action of consent agenda. Roll call please, Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eady Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the airport authority? Having none, we'll move on to current business. Item one, consideration and possible action to approve Phase Three of the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission's Parallel Taxiway Realignment Project at the Jimmy Austin Regional Airport in the amount of $191,000, 667... I had a problem sending it. Anyway, you know what I mean. Over the five-year period of 2020 and 2024. Roll call please, Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eady Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's good payback for me for giving Corey a hard time. I would entertain the motion for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll call to order the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eady Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church. Chris Anson.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a form.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call please.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eady Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the gas authority? With none, I'd entertain the motion for adjournment. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the utilities authority. Roll call please, Jay.
Eady Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a form.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call please.
Eady Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions for the utilities authority? Okay, with none, we'll move on to current business. Consideration and possible action to approve change order number one for $6,965.14 from Ron Welter Construction for pass-through costs associated with the new lift station for the new high school. As these costs are rebuilt to Seminole Public Schools, there is no cost to the city. Roll call please.
Eady Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two, consideration and possible action to approve the low bid of $155,840 from Davenport Construction for the construction of their water main to serve the new hotel to be located at northeast corner of Highway Nine and Ninety-Nine.
I'll have them just back out and go build that hotel.
We'll have some excellent water pressure at that corner for the next company. That, uh, that's the sum of it, Eady. The, uh, all indications are that this thing is a go. Uh, we're, we're still in discussions with their architects, their engineers. I mean, i-if they back out, it'll be an expensive ordeal that they've already, they've already put a lot of money into the design and, and all of that, so.
Well, the new line wouldn't do nothing to improve that value of that property anyway.
Exactly, yeah. Or the usability for sure.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Eady Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Entertain the motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that, we will move to the Seminole City Council meeting. Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Eady Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here. Would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, God whose mercies cannot be numbered, accept our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole for all people. Let us love one another for you, God, our Lord. Amen.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move it through.
Second.
Roll call please.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eady Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Having no items removed from the consent agenda, we'll move on to, are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole City Council? Okay, with none, we will open up our public hearing. We'll open the public hearing on the proposal fiscal year 2019, 2020 consolidated budget for the city of Seminole and its associated authorities and funds.
I don't know where we start. Do you, would you prefer to hear from the public or me first?
I think maybe you and then if anyone has any questions.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, uh, I think we all loved Mayor Fisher, but, uh, he, he always gave me the, the stink eye when I went too long on the budget, so without him here, I plan on getting you out of here by 11:00 PM. All right? Cause this is Jay and I's stuff and we love to talk about it. Uh, no, seriously, what, what the plan is that we'll, we'll go through the highlights of, of what we're doing and what you guys have planned, and then a-as the public or you wish to drill down further, we can get into as much detail as you, as you would like. I want to start off by saying thank you to you all for the, for the hours and hours that you spend in work sessions and, and creating pivot table, pivot tables on Excel. Chris, thank you for that. Uh, that's very helpful. Uh, and as always, Jay puts on his Superman cape about this time of year and does some incredible things, uh, to help us, uh, muddle through. And, uh, again, thank you guys for spending the, the time and dedication that you do. Uh, so, let's get into the budget. I, you know, I think probably from a, I'm trying to put myself in the public seat, you know, what do I want to hear, what do I want to know? We just got a sales tax report in today. Uh, our sales tax, I would say, is growing at a moderately healthy clip. I think it came in at 2.83, uh, for the year. And, uh, in, in measurement or in coupling with that, our intention is to give the city employees, all of them, including the unions, a 2% raise. So, uh, just under what our sales tax is doing, which I think is healthy financial management. So, uh, the raise i-is in the budget and we look forward, of course, our negotiations with both the fire and police union is not finished, but, uh, I think when you look at their salaries compared to what they are around the state, I think even they have to look at it and say, you know what, we're fairly compensated. So, uh, we look forward to a quick resolution to our unions, uh, on their contracts. So, let's wade into this and, uh, we'll start off with the general fund. Of course, our total revenue is $12,061,939. And appropriations against that are $12,018,185. So, uh, we've got just a little bit of excess in that fund, uh, about $43,000 into the general fund. The CIP, uh, because of the way that we structure our projects through bond money, uh, typically we, we try to keep that relatively thin in the, in the CIP, excuse me, I use alphabet soup, uh, capital improvements plan. So, what we do on the CIP dollars in the general fund is we try to keep that pretty thin. So, things like, uh, oh, uh, let's say a, a printer goes down, things like that, we're gonna, we're gonna maybe tap the CIP to, a large printer would go under a CIP or something to that effect, so, um, we don't have anything immediately appropriated. That's kind of a buffer for our, our capital improvement needs through the year. Water and sewer, we call that the Fund Twenty-Two, so we're gonna be, uh, the revenue in that is going to be eight, eight million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, five sixty-nine, and the appropriations against that are nine million, five ten, three forty-four. So, on that, we're going to carry a deficit, but our beginning fund balance is such that, that, that's bringing it down. We feel like it's something that you all felt, we wanted to benefit the public. Our, our job, and I'm paraphrasing what you guys said through the work sessions, but our job is to not walk out of here with a healthy savings account. The voters and the taxpayers pay their taxes to be impacted, to have their lives impacted and not to, for us to go bank a bunch of money. So, I think this reflects that accurately. I think we've crafted it to the point that it, it keeps us healthy, but it doesn't put a lot of money back in the bank in, in some sort of a savings account type scenario. Wellness Center, uh, I'm gonna let Jay talk a little bit about it, but the revenues were very good this year. Congratulations. Matt Pollock has done a fantastic, fantastic job with the Wellness Center. Uh, we're, our memberships are up, uh, the demeanor around with the staff and the members is excellent, and, uh, he's got a lot of creative juices flowing within his staff. They, they, uh, they come up with a lot of fun activities, and I think that's reflected in the revenue. You'll see that as $442,080, and the appropriations this year going in will be four, four hundred seventeen, seven twenty-five. Now, the excess in that is $24,000. That is to the good, right? But you'll notice that the, uh, the beginning fund balance was seventy-seven thousand in the negative, and sometimes it's hard for the, especially for the public to understand, well, how did we start out with seventy-seven thousand dollars in the hole? I'd like for Jay just to take just a second and get to the bottom of how that works and how we get there.
Well, as you know, we've had more fund deficits than surpluses only for the Wellness Center, uh, as a rule, and that, a lot of that was originally on startup costs and so forth. Uh, we do transfer, uh, funds from the general fund each year to cover that. The amount that we have not covered to date has been the seventy-seven thousand. So, going forward, this year, we had, we actually have a surplus in that fund for maybe the first year, this might be the second, but I think this is the first time. And we're projecting a surplus as well next year, so slowly we're going to hopefully eat away at that, that deficit, uh, so that we do not have to transfer additional funds to the general fund.
Did he mention surplus? I, that, to me, that's a standing ovation type thing. Uh, congratulations, Matt. Very, very well done. We're really proud of what you're doing out there. Street and alley, uh, so the street and alley fund, uh, we do get some money off of gasoline taxes, uh, that it kind of goes through the, the tax commission and we end up getting some money back into the street and alley fund. That's where this money comes from for the most part, and, uh, you can see that we've, we've appropriated our entire $60,000 revenue stream on that. And I'm gonna skip through some of the smaller funds. Urban renewal, I'll point out, uh, that during the work sessions and, and really all along through our council meetings, the Urban Renewal Authority has been praised for the work that they're doing. Uh, the new farmer's market, uh, the parking lot next to the bumpy brick, the brand-new building you see out here, uh, just across the street, uh, all of those things would not have happened without the Urban Renewal Authority. So, the city council gives them an appropriation at the beginning of the year, and then the Urban Renewal Authority has been very responsible, uh, for tearing down structures and building back some pretty aggressive things in town, and I'm really proud of what they've done. Um, so you can see that this year, we're appropriating another hundred thousand dollars to urban renewal, uh, and that gives them a total appropriation of 200,000. So, they had a hundred thousand from last year and a hundred thousand this year, and we'll go make sure that they go do great and wonderful things. You know what? This is probably a, a good time to s-to stop and see if anybody's got any questions. Is there anything that you would like to kind of go into a department and, and pick out before I get into the actual projects? Okay. All right.
Anyone from the audience have your question?
Well, I have just a simple question. Are you, uh, do we have any figures on the marijuana tax revenue collected from this area specifically, or is it just under this general sales tax?
No. The, the quick answer is no, and it's so early in the, in the game that we're not quite sure, and neither are any of the other communities sure about how we're going to track it. In fact, it's to the point that we're not even positive that we're allowed to put additional sales tax on top of the 7% that the state has provided. So, that is all up in the air. We're not even positive what's going on, so.
Well, it is being collected. More than 7% is being collected from dispensaries in the city of Seminole. Positive, a hundred percent positive of that.
Well, we're not su-I can tell you that we're not sure how that's getting to the tax commission and then back to us.
Okay.
So.
Could we, could we run, keep track of those numbers? Not necessarily this year, cause like you pointed out, it's still a very brand-new, uh, game, but, um, I would, I would like to be, uh, to see where those revenue appropriations are going. For instance, communities in other legal states have built recreation centers, and we have a pool that needs to be funded, we have streets that need to be fixed, and so I would just really be interested to see where that extra tax revenue will be appropriated specifically and how it can help progressive, you know, our, our community in a, in a positive way.
So, one of the issues, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the problem is we're not sure exactly where all the sales tax comes from. It's not broken down in a way that we can tell where it's coming from. Is that correct?
Yes.
We just get a lump sum and it doesn't give us detail.
Well, I, I would, I've seen, um, different states break it down a little bit more transparently, so maybe that should be on the Oklahoma Tax Commission, right? Um, but, but being in cannabis compliance, not just in Oklahoma, but in other legal states, I know for a fact that they'll be keeping track of that at some point.
That, who will? The state?
The state, yes, sir. And, and, um, with the new seed-to-sell requirement coming up in August, that's gonna be much easier for the state to keep track of, so, um, but I would just hope that we could, we could show that that tax revenue is positive for our community and what we can do to make, use that money wisely to benefit the entire community, not just.
I will buy your gas and your lunch for three consecutive days to visit the tax commission to get some answers. To be honest, we can't even get answers about online shopping.
Okay.
Where do those taxes go and how do I track that when you're passing it through to us?
Volunteer.
We, we've asked repeatedly, and I'm talking about we, the, the cities, the municipalities have asked repeatedly for a seminar to show us, how do we know? I mean, we're just trusting that, that a guy behind a, a computer that we've never met is giving us the right amount for, uh, Chris Anson's computer purchase online. So, I mean, and the more prevalent that becomes, the more nebulous it is for us to try to interpret, and that falls in the same arena that you're talking about with the cannabis sales and marijuana.
Well, I know Amazon's collecting sales taxes.
They do.
A hundred percent.
Absolutely. So, the question that, that Jay has when he gets a check in from the state is, well, what all did this, what all did this come from? Uh, it'd be great if we could, you know, it'd be, it'd be wonderful if we could do a test deal and say, uh, Jay buys a computer through the state and, and we want to be able to track that all the way through the tax commission to make sure that, that sales tax is being remitted back to Seminole. And there's just, frankly, they, they don't really care what we'd like to know. So.
Well, as controversial as cannabis is, it would be nice to be able to say, here's, whether you like cannabis or not, here's what it's doing for the community.
Absolutely.
And, uh, so, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I mean, you didn't have to vote for it to benefit from the tax revenue, for sure. Yeah.
Okay. We ready to get into some projects now?
Lisa?
All right, so. If you'll turn to, uh, the back of the little packet. We'll, we'll go to, it, in, in my little booklet, it's the second from the back. You'll see the funding from available bond proceeds, and at the top it has Priority One, Two, and the total of One and Two. Does everybody have a page that looks similar to this?
Bond summary?
Just the last two.
Okay. It may be in your iPad.
They said that we have to add it in our copies. Yes, I am.
All right, so if not, it's on the detail in, in your iPad, but, um, I'll just run down the items in Priority One, and then we'll go into Priority Two. Uh, so, from the police department, we've got a homeland officer. This is a, an officer that we are going to hire. He is employed by the city of Seminole, and then we share that officer in exchange for training and enforcement for drugs, et cetera, uh, with the Homeland Security Office. So, that is a $45,000 expenditure, and you know what I'd like to do, and this is a little, or is anyone tracking on this sheet? Are you all tracking that? Does everybody have the sheet, first of all? Okay, you do not have it. All right, so I'm gonna vary from what I had planned, and I'm just gonna tell you the employees that we expect to add, all right? And then I'll go back to individual departments, cause I think the employees are important because those are repetitive things that are going to hit that bond money annually from, from now until it ends. So, the $45,000 for a homeland police officer, I've got, uh, for the water department, they have asked for a testing employee, all right? So, uh, we discussed this at length in the working sessions, but a testing employee, the EPA wi-with the drinking water regulations has, i-it's become so cumbersome that we can no longer have, uh, uh, one of our water employees with a simple A and B water license be able to go out there and do what the regulations are requiring. We are going to have to add a full-time employee to be able to go out there and do the chemical testing, the analysis that they're requiring, and then on top of that, we are going to have to add more into our, our budgets for the testing themselves. So, what will happen is this person will go out and do, uh, I'm gonna call it remedial, it's actually much more advanced than that, but, uh, he'll do the initial testing, is a better term. He'll do the, he or she will do the initial, initial testing, and then that test will be, and the, and the sample of the water will be shipped off to an independent laboratory to be tested again. So, uh, we've got several different water, uh, safe drinking water, the layers of protection to make sure that our people are drinking safe water, but it's extremely expensive, and this is the first time that we're actually gonna put an employee over testing for those things. So. So, um, one of the first things that happened when we had a, a deficit, a shortfall, uh, I think it was three years ago, uh, we laid off a, a couple of employees. One of those employees was our GIS mapping expert, and, uh, let me tell you, it's, it's a big deal. It is a big deal to be able to have our infrastructure mapped. Uh, a classic example, uh, happened not too long ago when we had a major line rupture, and, uh, our guys, the supervisor was on vacation, our guys pulled up on an iPad, looked at where the valves were that would shut that off, and it was, this is a, a big 12-inch main, they went straight to the main, flipped those valves, and we solved the problem, we're able to take it a different direction. Time and time again, we see communities much, much larger than us that have a big line rupture, and they're out for days, but because we've, we've been able to capture institutional memory so many times, uh, somebody that's worked for your water department for 30 years knows that that valve is over here behind Taco Mayo, of course, yeah, it's right there under that bush that's grown up for 10 years, so you gotta move the bush out of the way to be able to get to the valve. Uh, he's the only one that knows that. He retires out, well, the next 10 years, nobody even knows what's going on, and without the GIS mapping, it's very important, it's been critical in many cases to our fire department. Uh, we've been able to map all of our storm shelters, we know where they are, so in case that, uh, we have a tornado come through town, we're able to go directly to the storm shelters and make sure that no one's trapped. So, uh, we're, we're asking to add that employee back at $40,000. A social media employee. Now, I'm of the age where I'm, I'm just kind of in between the really technical savvy younger generation and the folks that barely know how to, to turn on the, the computer, uh, with the exceptions being, uh, a few of my very dear friends here, but, um, we've come to a point where if you don't have a social media presence, you are going to get pasted. And we've seen recently some detailed misinformation that had nothing even close to being true, uh, go like wildfire through our community, and it was because it was never debunked, it was taken for the truth, and this happens more and more frequently. And when I say that, I'm talking about weekly, that this is occurring, and nobody is there with exception of Chris once in a while. Chris can, uh, s-he's savvy enough that he can, you know, he can add truth into this and, and diffuse a lot of it, but, uh, I think it, we're to the point where you have to have an employee that covers social media, that can get the message that this council wants out, and that is, we're spending money on splash pads, we're spending money on your streets, and here's where we're doing it and why we're doing it, and so. on your streets, and here's where we're doing it, and why we're doing it. And so, that the general public, who never saw that Coolidge was repaved, knows that, oh, well, I don't ever go down Coolidge, but they are apparently spending some street money, and maybe I need mine done next year. So, we're asking that we add a street, excuse me, a social media employee for $40,000. And then, one thing that we learned last, let's say, I'd say November, October, November, when we got ready for the Snowman Wonderland event, you guys are familiar with the big festival that we have out here in the park with all the lights. So, when we began, our street crews typically put those up, and they're, they're supervised well by Shelley out of Sharon's Department, does a great job in, in doing the setup. But when we began to put those up, we noticed that because of the age, some of them are five, six years old now, they weren't working. And so, everybody kind of looked at each other, the Lions Club looked at us, and we looked at the Lions Club, and then we looked at the Wellness Center, and everybody's kind of looking around, well, now what? What are we going to do? Well, we were able at the last minute to rally a bunch of troops and a lot of, a lot of volunteers, including the women's softball team at, at Seminole State and, and many others that I'm leaving out. But we did finally rally and got the thing looking presentable, or at least halfway presentable. But we get so many visitors from out of, out of our city and really out of state, that I think it's imperative, it reflects on us if we don't have that thing looking excellent. It needs to look fantastic, every time, every night. And so, what we're proposing is that we actually bring in someone on a part-time basis. This individual's already been identified, and they already do a lot with the Yukon Light Show, and we're asking to bring them in over the summer months and begin reworking and rewiring many of these exhibits that are already in place. Some of these exhibits have already been sent off to be upgraded to LED. Eventually, we want our whole park to be in LED. They're much more energy efficient, and they will last much longer. But on the short term, I think it's imperative that we get this thing looking great, and we want to invest $30,000 into a part-time employee over the summer. I believe that's all of the employees. So, now let me drop back into the Police Department. The 700 megahertz radio, and if you want any detail on any of these projects, stop me. I'm just going to start rattling them off, and if you want to get into weeds, we can. So, the 700 megahertz radio for $68,000. This is to equip our entire Police Department with the 700 megahertz capability, and $68,000. The bunker gear for the Fire Department, this is eight years old and, and, no, nine years old, isn't it? And the fire regulations say that those need to be replaced every eight years. So, we're one year over. We're going to go ahead and replace that this year for $57,000. We've got a half-ton pickup going to Public Works for $30,000. We have a grasshopper mower going to the cemetery. Actually, the next three will be cemetery, grasshopper mower. The fence on the west side, you'll remember that we fenced the south side. Now, we're going to fence the west side with that really nice-looking wrought iron fence. And then, we're going to replace some of the trees for $7,000. The fence is going to cost $40,000. Wastewater treatment plant, this is a, you know, that's something that we don't think a lot about. It's out of sight, out of mind until we have big issues. Apparently, before I got here, the whole town smelled really bad. And now that we've got Terry Cox and his crew in place, they do a great job, but they do a great job because this City Council continues to fund the upgrades that they need. So, this year, we're, we're asking for a headworks pump for $30,000, Maynard Wilson pump there by the baseball fields for $15,000, upgrades to the bio tower for $10,000, and then a sludge pump tower, or a sludge pump for $5,000. So, we'll also be asking for a sludge removal. So, if you go down Park Heights Road, you'll, you'll see the big pond in the basin that has the fountains, apparently the fountains oxidizers that are flowing inside that. We can't remember, none of us, even the old timers in the, in the departments can remember ever having cleaned that pond out. And so, when the, when the water levels get low in the sludge basin, you can see sludge up to the very limit. And DEQ has kind of put us on notice that that's, if that's not taken care of, we're going to start seeing some fines. So, that is very expensive. It's not, it's not a normal sludge. It's, it's highly active, and, and there's going to have to be some significant treatment that goes into removing that sludge. We're asking to do that this year for $500,000. That's a significant hit. But I think it's important for the long-term health of that, of that system down there. So, Parks, we're asking for $18,000 to build a new building out near the cemetery building. And then, they also want two mowers, two of the grasshopper mowers for, and that total will be $30,000. On the water lines, we, we have some water lines that are, have been inspected, and they need what we call pipe bursting. So, what happens in a pipe bursting is, we, we identify the line and the length, and then we actually put, drag some film, we'll call it film, it's very thick. But the film goes through that line, and then you superheat it, and it blows up and binds itself to the line that had issues. So, it's, we call it pipe bursting. And we're asking for $130,000 there. I already mentioned the testing employee for water. We've got four master meters that are going out on us, and those are $6,000 total for all four. We've got four variable drives for $24,000. And then telemetry, we need to have that reworked, and some software updates for $10,000. Water Department also needs a new half-ton pickup for $25,000. Line construction crew who go around and replace all of our aging lines, we need a manhole fan and a CO2 detector for $17,000. And they want to buy a used service truck for $25,000. The library roof needs to be repaired for $40,000. And then, on the community development, we've got an airport, a card reading machine for $20,000, supplies for the Snowman Wonderland for $5,000. Urban renewal was mentioned earlier, but that's $100,000. The mapping employee for $40,000. And then, Airport Match, we're not, we're not entirely sure that that's going to go off this year. I think we've, we're not sure, but I think it probably will. So, we've included it, $87,000. CDBG Engineering for $89. Me Shack Consulting, this is the people that did our flood study, the big, huge citywide flood study. We still owe them $18,000. Mentioned the social media employee. Natural gas study, this will be coming out of Sharon's Department, but it's really a, a kind of a gas authority expense, and that's for $75,000. Meter reading upgrades, we, we've talked a lot about going to automated meter reading and what we can do there. I put $90,000. We're not, we don't have our estimate back from the provider yet, but I, I went ahead and put a placeholder there for $90,000. That may or may not be accurate yet. The swimming pool operations, we talked about the agreement that we're doing with Seminole State, that's $40,000. Any legal fees that we have in the natural gas system for $40,000. And then, the roundabout, the famous roundabout is in for the budget of $200,000. And economic development participation, we're participating with our SEDC group to build a new road for the Blue Wave Boats Factory to add the substantial employment.
And it's actually paving an existing road, correct?
It, it.
It's not, it's not creating a new road, it is paving an existing.
Yeah. Elm Street is, is a city street. By definition, it is kind of a dirt road right now. So, I, I don't, I don't, something in between, all right? We're not creating a new road, we're just kind of going back on an existing road. You're right, for $40,000. So, does anybody want any streets done? All right. Hearing yes, we'll, we're going to be doing Lincoln Street for $200,000. We're going to be doing the alley behind the new building here in downtown for $25,000. McKinley Street is getting $65,000 for a new street. Roosevelt for $110,000. Lee Street is getting $65,000. School Zone Lights, which was promised to the new school, is getting $30,000. And these are, obviously with that price tag, these are the, the upscale, where they actually show you the speed that you're going as you, as you go through the zone. And then, College Street, which was a late addition by some very persistent council members, for $80,000. So, we're going to be doing roughly $575,000 in street upgrades and new streets. So, man, what a great, this, this is a great time. We've been, we, many of you have been here when we had zero money to spend. So, it's fun to finally get into a situation where we can do some of the bigger projects. Want to thank the taxpayers for all that they do to support us. And shopping in Seminole is important, really, really important. If you want to get down into some more detail, Jay is going to take the mic and talk for a while while I get a drink of water.
I, I think I would ask, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. This water tastes awful. I've been here ever since the head water. I don't know if I could put it in the water. And then, my water bill is about $50. I'm supposed to pay $50 water bill to buy water to drink.
You want me to take that? Or was that a state, was that a question or a statement?
Whatever, you can.
You want, you want to, yeah.
Water tastes good at my house. I don't know, I get some cable and mud.
See, I've been here a long time. I know when the water was soft, and you did, you got, I mean, you could cook a pot of beans for almost three hours. It takes you half a day now to cook a pot of beans, because the water's hard, and doesn't get soaked in. A long time ago, the water didn't used to do that. It tasted good. Everybody used to talk about Seminole good old water imports.
That's probably before some of you all were born.
I wish. Are, are different areas of Seminole served by different wells or? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, both, the answer to both questions is yes. It does blend, but yes, certain sections of town are served more by certain wells.
I know where I'm at. You know, we go through coffee pots, we go through irons. I have a water softener on my house now that helps, that helps a lot of it. And then, but no, for as long as I can remember where I've been, it's been, you know, in that area for about 20 years now, it's been, it's that hard water.
The calcium content has come up a lot of drinking water in the aquifer. Why, I don't know. But that's, that's what a lot of it is. That's the white that, that forms around your sink and faucets is the calcium. That's about all I can tell you.
That's like an Ada Verusa type problem too, though, isn't it? Because I could dream the same thing across, like everybody that's on that, that aquifer.
It's the aquifer. And they have to add chlorine to the water too, to keep the algae out. And that's what smells like bleach when you, sometimes when they have to hit them heavy to kill the algae in the lines, you draw a bath, and it smells like bleach. That's just protecting the water.
We are fortunate. I mean, when you, when you see the droughts that we've had over the years, we've never had the water ration, and we see other communities that do it like crazy. So, you know, for, for the few things we have to deal with, I think we're pretty blessed with the fact that we have plenty of water and don't have to do that.
The lower that water aquifer goes, the higher the content of calcium and sodium and all those other bad things that are in there. And it's, that's why Conawal has such bad water, because their off, side of the aquifer is really shallow compared to where we are. So, that's, and that's the water that's in the well that we're pulling from. So, I think it's, it's a problem with all the communities up and down through here, that the water is just getting worse over time.
You are scaring me. All these days, all these days we'll be without water, is that what you're?
Well, yeah. And, and it could be simplified pretty easy. It could be that me and my guys are just holding out for beans to come and prove this issue. We, we have to work down there, and we smell your beans, but we never deal with it.
With that, I want.
So, the answer is probably that we're not going to do, that we haven't done.
Right. Are there any other, any other questions on the budget?
The only thing I would like to do is take these two pages and go ahead and post them on Facebook. I know we'll get some hits for some of the things on there, but I'm more proactive of getting the information we're actually doing out there, you know, to all these people. Because that seems to be the trend toward, wherever I'm sending the information. It's Facebook anyway, whether it's true or not. So, we might as well put some stuff that's true out there.
Right. Now, the, the part that we are sending in with the state budget is.
I just meant this, that we talked about this tonight, and this is where, you know, so that's.
Now, you're talking about, I'm sorry, but you said the two, you're talking about the budget summary or on the CIP?
This thing we just talked about.
The CIP.
Projects that we have going on.
Right. And, and the only thing I want to state on that is that the bond money that we have available for next year that's projected, that's all that goes in right now for approval for the budget. So, anything beyond that, that may come from loan proceeds or what other source, not part of the budget, we'll need to amend for that, because that would be money coming in and money going out.
Well, the technical stuff, I'll leave to you.
I'm just saying, if you do not have that money, we will not have those, you may have the expectation of those projects, that we don't have.
I think that's, that needs to be stated. This is what's being proposed.
Okay, right.
Well, I would rather have high expectations than the low expectations people keep talking about.
All right. I just wanted to say, if we can not have three in choice, five million to spend.
No, this doesn't happen, it's all Jay's fault.
Okay. I'm used to that.
Any, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. On the reserve, the 10% we're required to have, how far are we getting to that?
Okay, we are going, you know, we're projecting a, a deficit for next year, a current year deficit. But our fund balance is high, it's at 1.8 million. So, with this deficit, that would bring it down to 1.3 million. Generally, we make up part of that. So, we would be back, right back at the one and a half million.
I did have a question also. Steve, we didn't talk about the part-time light person in our little budget breakdown person thing. And that's $30,000. Is that, that's just for one part-time person?
No. That, that's going to cover multiple people to get it ready for, yes, it's.
We were thinking about applying if it was just.
One person for the summer.
For summer, for summer help, no, that's.
Started, yes.
I got my.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions before we close the, the public hearing? All right, with no other questions, we will close the public hearing on the consolidated budget for the city. Moving on to approvals and acceptances. Resolutions. Number one, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution Number 2019-07, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019, 2020, consolidated budget for the City of Seminole and its associated authorities.
We've had all our questions answered, so I recommend we check that.
No call, please.
I don't know, Jay just said it all right on hand.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddy Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Corey Grabtree?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under ordinances. Item two, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1230, an ordinance rezoning 2316 West Wrangler from A1 agriculture to C1 neighborhood commercial.
Where is that?
Cata, well, it's right across from Kenny Pryor's office. It's Cata Corner from the hospital on the north side of Highway Nine.
There were no neighbor complaints or anything about it? It was all, motion approved?
Second.
Real call please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Corey Craftree?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item three, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number one, two, three, one, an ordinance rezoning nineteen acres at eleven oh two East Strather from F one flood to R four residential townhomes.
Exactly, it's the, moving it from flood being, I mean, what's, what was it classified as that?
Good, good question. So, uh, I, I miss, Bill Wollman can probably tell us more about what used to be behind the Wellness Center. I, I was told that there was a, a large lake, maybe, or pond. Uh, so, uh, that, it was dammed and it was obviously a flood area. So, when we went in and did all the improvements, took the dam out, did all the improvements around, uh, behind the Wellness Center, in this case, they had basically zoned all of the area flood. Well, several years ago, you guys deeded S E D C nineteen acres on the, we'll call it the ridge, which is to the east of the Wellness Center and the park, the pond, et cetera, the walking trails. That, that goes up on the ridge is clearly not in a flood plain, but is zoned flood. Uh, so, what we're trying to do is correct that with this. We're saying, no, we want to build some housing on that ridge and we can't build it in a, in what is zoned flooding, even though it doesn't flood and is not in the flood FEMA flood map, uh, the majority of it is not. So, we're asking that you guys take it out of the flood pla- or flood zone and put it into a residential type building.
Just means the old bowling alley, that one that rives that runs to the north towards Wellness Center.
So, we're just, uh, it's just nominatory to keep it up with the, I mean, keep it up with the town.
Yes, sir.
It's all changed, now it's no longer flood, so, because it's stated as flood, we can't build. So, this they've changed it.
It needs to be in a proper zone, I'm sorry.
And FEMA's okay, I mean, it's consistent with FEMA, what FEMA says too.
Yes. Uh, now, we don't actually have any plans to look at yet that's, that's, we can say none of it is in the flood plain. Uh, but it will, I mean, we've got certified flood plain managers with Mike and Sharon that look at this stuff and say, no, you can't have that building in a flood plain. So, once we get the plans, if anything is in the flood plain, there's one little creek that runs down to fill the, the pond behind the Wellness Center, that is still in a flood plain. I think it's important to make the distinction between flood plain and flood zone.
Right, flood zoning.
This is not in the flood plain, but it is a flood zone, so it needs to be changed.
That's right.
Before we go on that, has anything been done about the old gas lines and so on that particular area? You know, that used to be a, a busy oil field, a connection.
Not that I'm aware of, Dee Dee. The, the short answer is not that I'm aware of. I know that there have been some.
I don't think the lines would be active now, but, uh, I think there were some through there which would not be doing about that time during the boom and so on.
Not up on the ridge.
So, this is some of that, uh, institutional knowledge.
That's right. That's exactly right. He, he had me flustered, da, 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 but I didn't know there were gas lines there, so, yeah.
Okay, so we had a, a motion and a second, so real call please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Corey Craftree?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under current business, item four, consideration and possible action to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty workers' compensation plan renewal at an annual premium rate of one hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred dollars, which is unchanged from last year, less an escrow credit of thirty-five thousand three hundred sixty dollars and twenty cents for a net premium cost of one hundred fifty-six thousand thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
What generates our credit is that, reduce premiums?
We are overpaid. Uh, they already have a rebate because our, um, history has become better, our claims history. You know, we lost that for a few years. This is two years worth of, of, uh, positive claims.
So, is the, does the city have like a modifier, like, ba- businesses due out, you know, public sector or, uh, or private sector? Do they, uh, do, do we have some similar to that, like a modifier that changes that? Changes our rates?
The year to year you're talking about, as far as?
Yeah, now, it's based on claims and that modifier goes up or down.
Right, exactly.
You know?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Motion approved. Second. Real call please.
Chris Anderson?
Yes.
Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wollman?
Yes.
Corey Craftree?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under reports, Mayor, first, I would like to thank Jay and Steve and council members and the department heads and everyone involved with getting this budget together. Um, you know, we walked in a room and you see a whiteboard with stuff written all over it. Um, but you know, that's, that's the job they have, is to list not only the needs, but the wants. If they weren't, if there weren't any wants up there, then we're spending too much money, right? I mean, they, they're getting everything they need and so, but that's what we need to see. That's what we need to share with the citizens, just like, now, what Chris was, was mentioning is the fact that we don't have enough money for all the wants. We hope we have enough money for the needs. Um, and, uh, then we get to spend the rest of the money on, on the wants that, um, hopefully are what the citizens want, streets and, and, and the other things. But some of the money has to be spent on items that we have to live with, can't live without if, uh, if they break. The sewer, the sludge, the pumps, the lift station, those things which are not glamorous, but are needed. And, uh, you know, I think, I think the department heads have done a great job of being able to list those things and to provide that to us so we have a choice and understand what, what is needed and then what wants are. So, thank you very much. With that, uh, city manager?
Yeah, so, speaking of workers' comp refunds, I'll be bringing you a resolution to tell our employees that flip flops are not proper foot pursue material. So, you know what? I, I want to say real quick, that Seminole works because of our volunteers. The hours and the hours that are spent making this community better. I don't care if it's Dale and Donna Wallace at the food pantry with the Gates family or whether it's John and Jennifer Kramer working these baseball and softball fields. Um, it, Seminole is not a special place without them. And, uh, I just want to give them a shout out. Uh, I don't know if you saw the big tournament that was held down here. I know, uh, Jennifer worked her tail off, Jennifer Kramer. And she hates being recognized, but I'm doing it anyway. Uh, that, we, I don't know, we had probably twenty-five different states in Seminole represented at this, at our softball quad. And none of that happens without Jennifer Kramer and her team. Ken Crawford, uh, was great to recruit the, the softball, uh, event here. And we want to appreciate M S P, the group that put that tournament on, but it was, it was fantastic. I mean, we had, had restaurants sold out of food. You couldn't get into, to just about anywhere there for a couple of days. Um, the splash pad, want to recognize my guys, my, my water guys went out there. We had a major leak under the splash pad. Uh, they went out there and spent tons of hours and, and finally determined what the problem was. We didn't call anybody in, no specialist came in and, and did a lot of work for us. Our guys got down there and did it for those kids, so, uh, applause to them. Uh, just want to remem- want you to remember the American Legion Golf Tournament on July the sixth. Uh, the Chambers got our Fourth of July Festival on July the third. Uh, and then the farmer's. Were you recording? You want me to repeat Jennifer Kramer's praise?
I was letting her hear what's.
Oh, okay. Alright, so, uh, the farmer's market opened tonight. Be sure that you make your way down there to, uh, our, our deal by Don Zero's, that the, the old Arrow Pond building is where the farmer's market's located. That's, that's, the first night was tonight, and I think it's every Tuesday, right? I think it's every Tuesday evening, so, uh, that's all I've got.
City attorney?
So, I just wanted to bring you up to speed. I was asked to kind of put together what a, kind of what a docket looks like, one of our trial dockets twice a, a month. So, tomorrow's docket, just so you know, how hard our code enforcement people have been working. So, this is probably one of the largest dockets we've had. So, tomorrow, to be tried, are nineteen cases for litter, uh, on littering cases, sixteen junk and debris cases, uh, th- only three tall weeds and grass. And you asked the, asked last time to kind of take it, take it easy on everybody because of the rain that they've done that. Uh, these three, I think, are, are, have been there through the rains, so, we're, I don't think we can count those. Uh, two dangerous structures, um, one damaging public utilities, three inoperative vehicles that were abandoned. Uh, and believe it or not, one speeding and one expired tag are the only ones where people have either not fled or even just requested a trial. And so, um, the rest of them are citizen complaints primarily for disturbing the peace, there's very few of those. I just wanted you to know the break, the, the, kind of the breakdown of what we're trying. There's a significant amount of emphasis on code enforcement and, um, so, I can tell you they're, they're working hard. Um, last, I think it was the week before last, we had a pretty lengthy docket and cleaned out. Uh, we try to hold these people accountable and many times what we'll do is we will give them an opportunity. Sometimes a few days, other times maybe two weeks, depending on the situation. But due to all the rain, you know, it's, it's difficult for people to get in, you know, tractors and, and get in there to bring a vehicle out or something. So, uh, it's getting dry, so, uh, hopefully the excuses won't be so prevalent this time. But anyway, the last time we did that, we had a, you know, a, a lot of people that were, um, taking advantage of the, the last opportunity. So, you should see some things, um, being resolved in some of the problematic areas, so. And I just wanted to tell you on behalf of the Legion, American Legion, the issue that we had last time with the children, that they needed a place for the program, worked out beautifully. The kids have been there, uh, they've, man, it's just kind of been a, a good bonding between the, the Legion, the veterans down there and a lot of the kids, and matter of fact, they've signed some people up, uh, to, to, to sponsor a little program for the, for the sons and daughters of the Legion. So, anyway, that worked out really well. Joyce, uh, is no longer there, he took a job at the school, but they told me to tell you thank you and, and, uh, just wanted to let you know it worked out well, so.
Thank you. Word two, Stephanie Lambert. John Kramer? Word three, Corey Craftree. Word three, Tim Poplin.
I don't really know how many things, but I just want to say thanks to, to Jay and Steve. You know, when you look at this paperwork on the budget, I mean, it's hours and hours and hours. And I just want to say thank you from our end of it, and it always seems to work out over the years. Appreciate both of you guys, thank you.
Word one, Bill Wollman.
I just want to echo what Tim said. I, I spent nineteen years working with the budget for the Diocese of Eau Claire in Northwest Wisconsin. And, uh, it's always been a hard thing to get a budget that has to be balanced, to take care of everything. But it is so much easier when the information is provided as it is for us. And I just want to say again, thank you.
Word one, Larry Church.
Well, uh, everything's been said that needs to be said, I think, except that, uh, believes that, I may have this wrong, but coming to women and girls and the, uh, uh, the awful way that we, that women are treated in our society. I'll keep bringing up about the difference in pay. And I think the news is full of, and I don't listen to the news a lot. I don't think the news is kind of full of the discrepancy between what the women's soccer team is getting paid despite their outstanding performance compared to the men's soccer team. And it's right in line with what it used to be for women working in the workplace, it's seventy percent. They get paid seventy percent of what the men get, and they're renegotiating that. And, um, maybe sports is something that'll help highlight the fact that women are underpaid for doing the same work that men do. I don't know how it breaks down in Seminole, but I think, uh, women and girls need to stay in our minds as, uh, our future. The best thing that we can do for our future is to invest in women and girls. And Jay, I see now what your job really is. The difficult things come up, we just pass it over to, saying, Jay will talk now. Or do we have the money? But thank you very much for the work that you do. Thank everyone, and I want to thank the people in the audience that are here tonight. I see some familiar faces, faces, and I see a couple of folks that are new to our community, or at least that are coming here. And, uh, I'm glad to live in Seminole. Y'all may regret today that I came here, but. But I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud of y'all. And, uh, I don't know, I just can't say nothing about how good a job you did. Everyone in the community and everyone on this council does a much better job than the general public is aware. Thank you.
Word four, Dee Dee Patterson.
Well, everything's been said, but I'd like to second all that. I can't imagine where we could have better section heads bringing forth a budget and we can all agree on it. It happens every year and it works out every year, so, they deserve a big pat on the back.
Sure do.
We thank you.
Word four, Chris Anderson.
So, I get these texts now, sometimes in groups, and then these messages, people will emphasize something. And what it does is it copies what somebody said and it says, this person emphasized. All the thanks and everything that's been out tonight, emphasize that. Uh, and one other thing to all you other council members, this little column that's in the paper, you guys are welcome to write whatever you want, I'm here too. I don't know that I can continue a weekly coming up with something, but we called it council notes so that other council members can take turns writing. So, all you have to do, well, they, no, well, Sherry did, that's what Sherry said when she came up with the name. She said, so other councillors can write. I think your name even came up too. So, so, you guys can, you know, help me out on this. If you have an idea and you don't want to write about it, send it to me and I'll try to come up with some stuff for it. But, uh, yeah, we want to keep that weekly, I'm gonna need some help, so, anyway.
I admire your pros so far.
I just write in the last, last couple of weeks in my project, I needed to turn again. I usually like to have a day or two on the sit, I haven't been able to do that, so.
We, we do have a request in from the same, uh, the, the group at the shelter. They are asking for a, a swimming date, maybe several swimming dates that, that, you know, we've got the agreement with Seminole State College now. Uh, it's not going to cost us any more of it to allow them to do that, but we are going to have to have a special meeting and I'll have Ladonna get with you guys and, and we may have one or two other city issues that we can put on that agenda at the same time. So, we'll be asking for a special meeting here pretty quick.
I know it's only been a short time, but have you heard any feedback?
I know it's only been a short time, but have you heard any feedback on that? How's that going? Getting private Kevin participation?
Yeah, so, so far, it's, it's okay. I, I think Saturday, we had twenty-five total. The couple of days, I don't think word had gotten out before that, so, you know, three, four, five or so before that. But Saturday, I think we had a better day. I've not heard anything...
We had twenty yesterday.
Twenty yesterday, so that's good on a weekday, that's really good.
Okay. With that, I would anything to motion to adjourn?
No move.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, instead?